Good evening. Seeing no requests for open forum tonight, I'm going to call the school, regular school board meeting of the Prior Lake Savage Area School Boards to session. Call to order, and the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the oath for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members are present tonight with the exception of Mr. Hanson. Next is the approval of the agenda. Quick note on the agenda. Administration has informed me that closed session is not needed this evening, so we will move that, remove that from the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve, approve the agenda, amended agenda?
So moved.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to take out the financials. I've got a question on the disbursement financials that were on there.
On the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda.
Martha?
The motion, I second.
To remove item from the consent agenda.
Oh, I don't think you do.
Can you move down where you can speak about it?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, there is no motion that's, or, yeah, okay. Okay. So we will put that item as first item in old business. So I have a motion and a second with the amended, with the amended agenda. Are there any more questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that passes six-zero. Tonight's consent agenda, these items are considered routine in nature and to be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event that item will be removed as a consent and addressed. And you're wishing which item to be removed, Mary?
The check wire transfer, the detail of the, it's called the check wire EFT and ACH banking activity, the two PMAs, and then the cash at the end, the cash.
So items A and B?
Correct.
And C? And D?
Yes.
Right? So we have, on the consent agenda night, the approval of the school board minutes from April 9th and April 23rd, resignations, terminations, non-renewals, resolution for the acceptance, oh, excuse me, so those are the two items on the consent agenda this evening. Amended, all right. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that passes six-zero. Next on the agenda is the resolution of gifts, and tonight we have one gift from Rick Graywit for middle, for Hidden Oaks Middle School. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of these gifts?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Todd, this is a resolution, so a roll call vote is needed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes six-zero. Next on the agenda is Laker Pride.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure, as I see several people making their way up to the podium, that is fantastic. One of our district goals this year was to create and implement educational equity and excellence plan, complete with gap closing measures, culturally responsive teaching strategies, student engagement, family engagement, and professional development. And tonight, come on up so the camera can get you.
Camera's over there, so you gotta come in front of us.
You can stand in front of us.
Camera's right there, stand behind her.
Hey, I think it's very fitting, as we launch Teacher Appreciation Week, to have teachers that we're honoring tonight and their role in moving forward our equity and excellence work. You know, you can have the greatest plan in the world, you can have the best folks come in and do professional development, and Dr. Shiroki Holly certainly has served our district well. We had awareness and some training for all of our staff, and those of you in front of us today, along with several of your colleagues, really are the champions and the heroes of the work that we've done this year on this goal. You took a risk, you were vulnerable, you allowed others into your classroom to take a look on what was going well and what wasn't going as well in terms of culturally responsive pedagogy at this point, and all of that work has led us to get deeper learning and to further help one another get better. One of the highlights for me was when I was with the high school staff, and the comments that the high school cohort made was, we can't wait to support the team that goes next year ahead of the rest of us. So I know you've got more to share with us and to provide more context about what you actually did this year, but I want to thank you for your courage, I want to thank you for your commitment to our mission and ensuring that all learners reach their full potential. So, thank you. With that, I'm going to hand over to Director of Teaching and Learning, Kevin Schuttenger, who's going to continue to help facilitate this.
Thank you, Dr. Stello. And we have some representatives of more than three or four dozen teachers who have volunteered, like Dr. Stello mentioned, to really lean in to learning about culturally responsive, culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies. That really looks like validating and affirming the home culture and home language for the purposes of building and bridging for students to success in the future of academia and mainstream. How do we help students take the success that they have in their home lives, bridge it with success in our academic culture, to lead to success in their futures?
And what does CLR look like in the classroom? And they're going to tell you a little bit more in a minute also, but you can kind of see up here, we're really focusing this year, year one, on the classroom management piece and also dabbling on the academic piece as well, but it's about integrating movement, more movement for kids of all ages into the day. It's about increased student voice and giving kids more of an opportunity to speak and talk and really have that important dialogue about their learning and with one another. It's a lot of discussion protocols, so kind of teaching kids and giving them a structure to be able to talk and discuss in productive ways together that are fun and engaging for all kids. And it's on the teacher's part, it looks like really purposeful and really intentional planning for engagement. Who are the kids in my room and what strategies will get them engaged? And so it's a lot of work behind the scenes on the teacher's part.
And this is, as Dr. Stello mentioned, and as you've heard from Assistant Superintendent Holmberg, really a part of our comprehensive E-12 Equity Plan, and it really is all about increasing student engagement, which we know is linked to student achievement, dealing with inequities that exist in our system and the larger educational system, and just really giving outrageous love, giving our kids the love that they need to succeed. What I really, really, really appreciate is not only the teachers who volunteered to come here tonight, but again, the nearly 60 teachers who have said, yes, I want in, and I want to dedicate my time before and after school, during the school day, I want to open my classroom to learn and learn together with a cohort. I have a great deal of respect for you and I have a great deal of appreciation for you. So I'd like to really give you each an opportunity just to introduce yourselves and mention where you teach.
Thanks. I am Lee Corby, and I teach science at the high school.
I'm Ashley Flashnery, and I teach first grade at Greenwood Elementary.
I'm Julie Pikowski, and I teach English at the high school.
I'm Shayna Bates, and I teach first grade at Westwood.
I'm Lisa Henningson, and I teach fourth grade at Westwood.
I'm Sarah Zeeman, and I teach fourth grade at Westwood.
I'm Paxton Malika, and I teach third grade at Greenwood.
I'm Brittany Hahn, I teach first grade at Toretto Ridge.
I am Sabrina Tapia Concheras, and I teach first grade at Lola de Lago.
I'm Molly O'Halloran, and I teach second grade at Redtail.
Thank you. And we have an opportunity here for just a few of you to tell a little bit about what the experience has been like for you in learning some of these strategies and what it's like for your students as you apply them in your classroom.
Yep, and so Kevin and I kind of broke this down into three parts, the district and school training, and then they've also had some specific coaching from the CLR specific coaches, Dr. Holly and his team, and then kind of what the impact has been on instruction and what they've noticed in their students and their classroom community and culture and with their academics. So the few people, I think, that were just going to say a couple words.
So I've noticed some positive impact on student learning. We do word study with Greek and Latin roots, and this has been an opportunity to build on their academic language like I've never seen in previous years. They're engaged, they want to do more, prefixes, suffixes, root words, Latin, Greek, and this has kind of been a struggle of mine, so I appreciate the opportunity to engage students in different ways, and the discussion protocols that I learned really kept them motivated, and they didn't want to stop.
Thank you.
And then Sabrina. The number one thing that I want to say about CLR is it's not another thing to add to our wheelbarrow, it's how we carry our curriculum. So basically, what CLR did for us is it gave us a way to teach math in a way that kids can understand, to teach language arts in a way that kids can understand, in a way that they can succeed, to what you said, due to their cultural background, to their home background. And I have one friend in particular that I would like to talk about. She came through the PSC process, she needed eight to 12 reminders a day to just simply achieve her tasks, and with CLR, she went from maybe 25 attention rate to 100 percent. And that's something that's very significant that I want to tell you. A child that I had to call their name three to four times a day, that was acting inappropriately socially, is now having the tools to have eyes on me, to have body in their space, and to feel like they can prosper and succeed. And that's one of the biggest things that I love about CLR, is all children feel like they can succeed, so I'll stop. I'm kind of going to stop.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I'm going to piggyback off what she said, because talking about the coaching sessions, we had our, them come in and actually watch us, was it three times or twice? I can't remember, three times. And it was, talk about vulnerable, you know, going into something that we really haven't done before, and then the end, being in our room for about 45 minutes and really critiquing us and making us really stretch ourselves and our thinking. But my aha moment was just having her tell me, what do your individual students need in your lesson? And you know, and also telling them why you're doing it, why are they doing a protocol, you know? And because you need to move, you need to talk to your neighbor, I know, you like to talk to your neighbor. And so I think them, understanding by you talking about that, they really understand you respect them as an individual, and they bring that back to you and are respecting you as a teacher as far as, in your teaching as well, so it's been great.
Thank you all so very much for dedicating and leaning in, thank you.
It has been, so the teachers that were before you today certainly led in some deeper learning ways, but I'm also very grateful to all of our staff and to many of our board members who also have engaged in learning some of the culturally responsive pedagogy and strategies as well. And I think as we all continue to learn more and support each other in this work, we're going to continue to do great things for kids, so thank you very much. We do have a second, I did not amend the agenda, but we do have a second Laker Pride this evening. I have the pleasure of recognizing and announcing the Minnesota Superintendent's Office School Personnel Association Executive Director of the Year. So, tonight we recognize, just as her organization did, Martha Walts for all. I'm not going to read the full letter of nomination, but the comments that I've received, and I know Martha has received since this announcement, really speak to everything that was in the nomination letter. Martha is the glue in many ways that holds us all together. She's our historian, her work ethic is beyond anything I've ever seen. I have to be really careful about saying, man, it'd be kind of nice if, because it'll be done before I even have my thoughts figured out. The relationship building, the absolute servant leadership that Martha has, the way she brings everybody in, if they're new employees, new staff, parents into the organization. Martha works tirelessly during the school day, but beyond the school day, she's working, supervising events and working for community ed and with activities and athletics. I invited her to attend the Celebrate Concert with me on Friday, she said, oh, I would have loved to, but I'm already working at it. So she's constantly giving to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. So not only has her work impacted me and helped me be successful, but I know she's had a tremendous impact on many of you in this room and many of our community members and staff members across the district. So it is with pleasure that we recognize and celebrate Martha tonight.
Next, on the agenda, our personal items. First, candidates for employment, and I'll turn to Mr. Matt Mott.
All right, I recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any questions or comments? I have one. If, to clarify, I noticed earlier there was a large number of teachers on the non-renewals, and then we come back and we hire them, or they're on for approval of employment, can you speak to that a little bit and why that is?
Sure, absolutely. And so the vast majority of our non-renewals in a given year are resignations and non-renewals, you fall into really two categories, either kind of the natural flow of employees through a resignation process as they look for experiences outside or move away from the district, and then we also have a number of non-renewals due to the licensure status of our teachers. And so in a lot of our programs, especially our specialized programs, we're often employing teachers who have a non-traditional license, which is to say, they're absolutely qualified for the, for the teaching experience that they're giving us. However, they do have a non-traditional license, and there are steps that we need to take working with the Department of Education on an annual basis to ensure that we're able to retain them in the following year.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that passes six-zero. Next on the agenda is the approval of leaves of absence.
So next I present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion for the leaves of absence?
So moved.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that passes six-zero. I think that does it, is it not, Mr. Mott? Okay.
Indeed.
Next is unfinished business, and we're moving those items A, B, C, and D from the consent agenda to this portion. So Mary, you have a question on those areas?
Yes, I had two questions, and I'll give them both to you in case they're related. The first one is on the check wire transfer dispersment summary by fund and also the cash, the additional large amounts in the construction fund for April, if you could explain what they're for. And then the other piece that I noticed is, this is the first time we've had the bond portfolio management report included, which, by the way, thank you very much. But my question with that one had to do with the spend down percentages, and given the changes in the bid packs and what we're able to do, there is a significant spend down that needs to occur by August, and I wasn't sure if, if we're going to be able to make that, and if we don't, are there consequences?
I, it is, I'm not sure which one to take first here. The construction fund is showing the total of the dollars coming in to, based on selling the bonds, so you're seeing that coming into our portfolio here. And also with the information from the, from PMA, we are getting a new draw schedule, and so you'll see this change in the future as we update that draw schedule based on changes during the construction. You know, we base our investments on the draw schedule that we, that's provided to us, and when we think expenses will happen, and so that's what you're seeing here, and as those things change, we'll make adjustments in this, in this program. And you'll, we'll see a little bit more interest revenue from that, because we're delaying that, but also I expect that we'll, you know, throughout this will be many changes, as there are in construction, so. We often, you'll see ups and downs in this at all times throughout this process.
Okay.
Because we can't exactly spend exactly, you know, what's, what we anticipate, you know, it's a budget, so, you know, we know we're going to spend it eventually, we make the best estimate of when those expenses will be, but we don't always know for sure.
Okay. With regards to the check wire dispersment and the cash, the 2.291 million that shows up in accounts payable for April, and then the additional cash doesn't match the Klein Bank removal of 2.846 million, so I wasn't sure how that added up and where the accounts payable were coming in, since we haven't done a lot yet, but I'm not quite sure if that's the case.
Well, we actually have done quite a bit of work. We're continuing, as we work through this process of our construction, we've had several meetings, we have engineers working on this, we have architects working on these projects, and we're paying them those professional services for the work that they're doing for designing our construction projects.
So what is the 2.846 million for, if I might add? I mean, because it all showed up just this, in the month of April, so I'm, if they've been doing work the whole time, do we pay in a lump sum? I mean, how does that work?
Right, they, we receive pay apps for these projects based on those AIA agreements, and they're in, under that AIA agreement, and they're processed, and it is, it is some construction projects, it's not all the bond. So we still have long-term facility maintenance projects going on right now that are in Fund Six as well, the long-term facility maintenance bond is in this project, in this fund, so it's not just the bond, or the recently passed bond that's in the Fund Six construction.
Okay, it, there is a difference between the long-term facility maintenance Klein Bank Fund, the building construction fund that's listed in here, and the long-term facilities maintenance is separated out. Again, if it would be possible, I will send in a separate request to ask for what we paid 2.846 million for, if that's okay, for the month of April.
Sure, that would be great.
That would help. And then the only other question that I had is, and this is something that I'm a little confused about, but thank you for explaining the, the run rate on the, on the bonds. And one of the questions that concerned me with that is, is I remembered that when we said we were going to put the money away and get interest earnings from that, which is, which is good, I thought that there was some conditions on how much interest we could earn on that before we had a, had some sort of penalty or something of that sort, that's why it was a concern about our, our spend down and the need to spend quite a bit more money between the two, both of them by August, so if there's going to be a new run rate, does that, are we going to suffer any penalty for not having these things done on time?
If you look at the second part of the, of the portfolio pages, the bond portfolios, and there's two separate ones, because we have two separate bonds.
Right.
But in there is the arbitrage schedule, and you can see that's the penalty, potential penalty, we have to match or exceed the revenue or the, the interest rate of the bonds, and we're not even close to that right now, and so that's, we don't have, I can't foresee throughout the life of this bond where we, as a district, will, it's not really a penalty, in fact, it's really looked as, if we're reaching arbitrage, that means we're maximizing the amount of revenue that we can get in interest earnings. Anything over that, where we would have to pay back to the government, because that's the ruling and that's what arbitrage is, is paying, but it's not really a penalty, because we'd be actually maximizing the most interest revenue that we could get as a district.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I will take a motion for approval of the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT, ACH banking activity report, the building bond investment reports, and the bank reconciliation statement report for March 2018.
So moved.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Todd, are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that passes six-zero. Next, we move on to new business with activities presentation. Tonight's presenter, we have a substitute. Substituting for activities director, Reitz is assistant directory.
Lucky me.
Beth Fuller. Take it away, Ms. Fuller.
Okay, so I've never run this part before, so someone assist me with that.
All right, which, which one looks like you? This one?
Yes.
And then arrows forward and back.
Perfect, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Should I put this down?
Take it away.
Okay, so I am here to present, we did not have a fall presentation, so we get to delight everyone with the fall and winter for our seasons the past school year. So we start off just with a main screen about why we play, explaining that Prior Lake definitely treats its programs like educational athletics, falling in between the youth and club sports, and then about 3% of high school athletes typically move on to play college or professional sports. So we feel that we are an extension of the school day, it's important for our kids that we are teaching them performance and moral character traits. We want to see that they are kind to the neighboring school, we want to see that their super fans are cheering well, that our athletes are performing well, but at the same time that they're learning all of those key traits, respect, empathy, resilience, you know, those are the life skills that we hope they are learning. That's Laker, the top phrase at the top of this slide is our activities collective purpose and what we've been working toward with our coaches and our athletes throughout this school year. This slide shows that Prior Lake High School has become the seventh largest school in terms of enrollment numbers. You can see some of the top schools in the state also, up at the same category as us. We just wanted to give you a picture of where our numbers fall, and it sounds like that'll be ever increasing. This fall, these are our participation numbers, they have been steady or increasing, depending on the activity that has been going on. We had a very large cast for the Fall Musical, and you can see that most of our sports had solid numbers, some sports did have to make cuts this fall, and that can be a tough time, but overall, our numbers were pretty well. If you calculate that out, our math, people can see that's about 800, a little over 800 students participating in the fall. For our winter season, again, our, one of our busiest season in terms of everything being indoors and in the gyms and bounding all around the same sites, we had over 900 students participating there. Again, almost all of our sports were consistent in terms of the numbers that they had, again, a few have cuts as well. Our strength training program, the Laker Performance, had over 165 students in the winter, and that's increasing, and getting a little crowded, obviously, in that space, and we're learning how to use the track as well to kind of rotate groups throughout those venues. Intramural basketball, primarily boys participating in that, we keep trying to pull some girls' teams, I actually went around and tried to get a crew together, they were committed, but then they didn't show up. So we're trying to figure out some things to get them involved and possibly have a separate section of that. And then below that, you can see some of our activities, mock trial, one act play, speech knowledgeable, and robotics, their numbers are all really strong as well, as we look from last year to this year. Their numbers are all really strong as well as we look from last year to this year. What we did next was put together the fall scoreboard update. Just to let you know, again, we care about the athletes. And obviously, a lot of people care about the scoreboard. And so we want to make sure that we show both in terms of how each of our sports did. Couple highlights from the fall. Obviously, we did really well again in volleyball. And C.C. McGrath was named Miss Volleyball. And that's quite an honor to have a student get that selection. We had quite a few teams or individuals that went to state. And we had a double state team that went, did very well. And Mike Shabaski was Coach of the Year. His team got to travel. They were section champs, so they got to go on to state. And even though we hosted some games locally, they got to play at St. Cloud State University. So some people got to travel up there and enjoy that game as well. Girls Swim and Dive had a great year, sixth overall. Boys Cross Country, I think they were worried they were going to have to reload this year. And they did really well. They were section runner-up, which means they also got to move on to state. Our girls team sent Mallory Stack to state, and she was an All-State honoree. She will be back, I'm sure. So, and then our girls had a strong season as well. The SSC has some tough competition. So that's the fall. Some of our club sports, mountain biking, we had a state champion as well. I know some of these folks were honored at various meetings throughout the fall. So you are familiar with some of those. Their team was fourth overall. And again, their group is growing, ever-growing. And they're starting to gear up now with meetings for next year, this summer. Those are a picture of our state doubles, Taylor and Charlotte. And then again, we did the same thing for the winter scoreboard update, just showing you again how each of the sports finished overall. And we had some section champs. We had some excitement with the girls' basketball season this year, taking section champ and getting to move on to state. We had wrestling that had five qualifiers. And we're in the toughest section there. So that's a little hard to move on sometimes in the last few years. We did well with girls hockey. They advanced in section. And that was, again, kind of a lot of progress that they're making. They are under the direction of a new coach this year. And so getting, you know, kind of her grounds and building that team bonding. And then they got to move on. In dance, we moved on in jazz and kick. And that was a first for us to advance in both categories. There was a lot of excitement in the gymnasium that night for them. So we got to be a part of that. And then our swim and dive team had two champions. And we have a couple pictures of those coming up. And then our cheer squad was the grand champions at the U of M competition, which is a really big, very selective competition. And they did well. And again, they went to nationals and did well. They had a new category this year called Game Day. So they got to compete in that, and they did really well at that as well. Our Nordic ski boys got to move on. They were the section champs. And that's the first time they've been a state entrance in about 20 years. So it was pretty exciting for them to know that they put a great race together and everybody pitched in for that. Olivia Jacobson advanced for the girls, and they had a great day out at Highland that day. Alpine Ski, we had some injuries on our team. But overall, they did really well, finishing second in the SSC. And boys were seventh. And Ashley George was 11th overall at state. She had a couple great races up there. That's the best she's done. In gymnastics, we had two advance to state. So again, a fun-filled winter. These are a couple pictures of PJ Lens, who was our state diving champion, and then Sean Dwyer, who was the 500 free champion. So first time we've had two champs on the blocks in a little while there. The next picture, again, we mentioned that C.C. McGrath was the Miss Volleyball for Minnesota. But she was also selected as our Athena Award winner. And we got to celebrate her at the luncheon this past Friday. Quite a few people from the district attended. And C.C. was definitely in honorable company at that event. And you can see there's just some amazing women that they honor. And it was a great ceremony that she got recognized at. And she's already at the U performing and studying and on the team scrimmaging as well and having a blast, she said. So you might have heard that our dance team got to perform at the Super Bowl. So this is a couple highlight shots from that. And that was a big surprise, like secret. Nobody could talk about it. Again, probably harder for the parents than it was for the girls. I don't know. That's kind of a big deal to get to do that. But they had a blast and loved every minute of it. So that was fun. In terms of the co-curricular other activities, we had four choir singers who received SSC honors. So you can see they're pictured in the top picture. And then we had 10 students that made it to the honor choir for state this year. So that's a big number, according to our directors. For the band update, Sidney Cool and Justina Wojan were outstanding concert members. And they were selected by the directors to join in on the honor band for the ninth and 10th. And then we also had just a highlight photo, one photo of the Hawaii trip, an amazing trip that they got to take and help celebrate everything. There was several different times that they got to play and perform on that trip. So they had an awesome time and a great experience. Continuing on with the band update, these are the All-State band members that were selected this year. We had six members, and some of them are in different bands, orchestra, as well as honor band. And so they were chosen for that. In the theater department, the Fall Musical was a Christmas carol. And you can see they did a great job just with their costumes and the set as well. They had snow going. We still have that in the spring. So there's, you know, a lot of that going on here in Minnesota. The one-act play, we hosted that. And Dave Tuma did a fantastic job, as always, helping. We hosted the subsection for our region. And then the spring, we had A Midsummer Night's Dream. And that was the play that we just wrapped up about two weeks ago. So hopefully, you got to see some of that. Our robotics update for the year, they competed at a new regional event this year. They did not go to the U of M. So they went to the Seven Rivers Regional. And they won the chairman's award at that, which is the most prestigious award that you can win at any of the tournaments. And they will compete at state coming up. They told me that although they didn't perform as well as they wanted to at their last event, they are sure they have a plan and they are definitely going to be competitive at the next event. So they have a good plan in place and they're ready. This year, we had two students move on in speech and advanced to state, Olivia Hall and Tressa Schultz. And I got to sneak over and check that out, too, and learn a little about the storytelling event. And then also watched Olivia just quickly in drama. Looks like we have a typo there. It's not dram, it's drama. She did a good job as well. And then this year, Kristy Momgren helped to host the art festival at Normandale College. And in doing so, she also helped create a new teachers' award. So the SSC gave out a teachers' award. In the past, it's always the judges from Normandale that decide whose work is the best. And she felt like the teachers should also get some input into that. And so helped to create a teachers' award for that. And actually, William Bentley from Prior Lake High School earned that honor. And again, Tressa Schultz won another award at this event for merit. Our knowledgeable team, which has gone on to state for 14 years in a row, they advanced again this year and had a great group. They placed ninth overall. I remember them saying they were first after, you know, a certain amount. But they obviously have tough competition up at state. But they just love being able to go and engage and compete with the best of the best. So they like that adventure. And then we have a picture of the Prior Lake High School skull chant. Russ, of course, threw this in. He's a Vikings fan. So it was a big event for him. No, just kidding. It was, it was a staff and student huge event. And it was just a really big community builder. There was so many students that you can see, this is before school started. So you can see how many people were there and just wanted to be a part of it. And whether they wore purple or they just joined in in the cheering. And I can't remember the exact word. I texted him before this. So I can't remember the exact number of hits that we had on people that shared videos of this. But it was a lot. And he told me that one day Chan Hassan came to our school and they were supposed to play volleyball. And they started walking through our entryway and right into the commons area. And he caught them near the activities office. And he said, oh, no, you guys are, you're down the hall over here, this way. And they go, no, we're trying to go see where you had that skull chant for the Vikings so we can see, you know, the space and just stand in it and check it out. So that was pretty cool. He thought it was pretty cool. So we had a ball with that. And then just recently, right before prom, our group of SAD students, who did a fantastic job of organizing this event, we held the mock crash for our juniors and seniors. We had a lot of help from Savage and Prior Lake and Allen's Towing and some other people that just helped pitch in and gave us a lot of support and vehicles. And they talked through a lot of what we wanted to have good decision-making and what we wanted from our students as well. So it went off without a hitch. We had some theater department kids as actors. And they just got tons of compliments on how well they handled everything and that they made it very realistic. So it was a good message. And then about a month ago, almost, we held the first Play for Patrick screening that we offered onsite here. We had their organization come in. As you can see, we screened almost 200 athletes overall. Most people's results were normal. We had a lot of people come through in the morning, and then it started to slow down in the afternoon. But this is a great event where we identified about six abnormal screens that then those people would go take that result and go back to their own doctors to get that checked out a little bit more and explored a little bit more. So in many ways, you can say it could be a life-saving event that we had for about six people. So we are excited to do that again in the future. And then they did donate another AED for one of our sites that doesn't have one. So that was another great thing. That may be the end.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
From Ms. Fuller?
Busy.
Busy.
It's great to see so many kids involved.
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity.
We continue that.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, what's the story behind, who is Patrick?
Who is Patrick? Patrick Schoonover was an Eastview youth hockey player. And approximately two years ago, he was at a game or practice, I don't remember which one, and just went down. And they were unable to revive him. And so his family basically has partnered with others. And they are going around doing heart screenings for youth. Anyone, it's basically 14 to 18, 14 to 20, about that age group.
What a great idea.
In hopes of preventing that type of thing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. You did a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda this evening is a report on strategic direction, A: Increasing Measurable Student Growth and Achievement. Tonight's presenter is Director of Teaching and Learning Services, Mr. Schuttenjer and his team.
Good evening, board members. I am really excited to share with you some of the work we've done with E-12 literacy this year. And really, we gave you kind of an update formatively a couple months ago, sharing some of the work the elementary principals have done this year and really increasing their capacity to lead literacy and really increasing the amount of knowledge we have around literacy practices in classrooms every day. Today, I'm really happy to give you kind of a K-12 look at, or an E-12 look at really what we're doing and what we've accomplished this year and what we plan to move on to next year. This work, of course, supports our strategic direction to increase measurable student growth and achievement. And it's really focused on reviewing E-12 literacy research, our best practices, our current district practices, and our resources to recommend future systemic innovation and growth. So when we think of that, there's a lot going on in that statement, from individual teacher practices to teacher practices across the building to the leadership practices that support teachers in their best practices, to our resources, our classroom libraries, our instructional resources, our digital resources across the district. So really, a very big project, but we've made some excellent progress so far. We have both a wide team and a deep team, which is really exciting. So we have a team that represents all of our elementary buildings, our secondary buildings, with Julie Siegel and Ann Greener leading from the secondary. We have community education represented, our student support services team, early childhood, and our teaching and learning team. So we really have all facets of literacy in our system represented. And it's been really exciting and rewarding to work with this team to think about how we all come at it and from different perspectives. When we think E-12, we really took a systematic process to review what we currently do and think about what we want to do to help students achieve at higher levels. So we reviewed all of our standardized and classroom assessment data. That includes our MCA results and our MAP assessment results and our FNP results and our classroom assessment results, what grades, and are students getting on formative and summative assessments. We got input from our elementary ELA committee. We surveyed teachers to see what their practices are in their classrooms and how confident they feel with putting different literacy strategies into place. We also used observation data from various walkers and observations we're conducting now. And we got input from all of our building principals. We took all that, put it all together and really analyzed to see where our strengths and weaknesses are in our current practices and our resources. So we've, based on some of those results, enacted a wide range of initiatives, really revolved around increasing leadership capacity, taking a look at some of our resources, piloting some new ones in some cases, and then making some more systemic ones for future years to continue doing that. So we've looked at resource needs, PD needs for our leaders, and professional development needs for teachers. And you've heard about Workshop Live in past meetings. That's one of our very successful and getting really rave reviews from teachers that has really been successful this year. And you'll hear a little bit more about that in a bit. I'd like to invite three of our elementary administrators to tell a little bit more about their experience. We've worked with Bonnie Hauck, Dr. Bonnie Hauck, a literacy consultant, who's really helped us build capacity in our leaders to recognize what good literacy instruction looks like and how to continue to support teachers in building those practices in their classrooms.
We have three slides to share with you. I'm excited to be back again. I think we presented in February. We were starting to talk about exactly what we were going to do. But I'd like to share with you just kind of what we have done since then. As Kevin shared, we've met with Ms. Hauck probably six or seven times as an elementary principal group and really kind of dug into the work. We've looked at best practices, all related to balanced literacy. And it has been very invigorating for us just to kind of get ourselves around a collective learning together to really build that capacity, for us to have those conversations with teachers, with employees in the district, all regarded to balanced literacy. One of the things that is really exciting to share is data points. So 293 literacy classroom visits. And what that is, is it's about a three-to-five-minute walkthrough of a classroom, where we kind of look for things, classroom libraries, learning targets, and just kind of look at instruction. And what it is, is it gives us a very schematic view across the district of where are we really strong and where are some areas that we need to continue to grow at. It's not an evaluation, per se, of individual classroom teachers or anything like that. It's kind of looking at it across the district. So then we took those data patterns. We looked at it. And we really needed to kind of establish like a baseline data to start with. So we kind of called it like our literacy culture, where are we at with instructional practices? Lots of conversation about that, lots of looking at data, lots of talking about how do we guide next steps with that. So then we analyzed critical areas of professional learning to support teacher growth and student achievement. And what that looks like is talks about how we have conversations with teachers in observations or how we walk into a classroom and then in the hallway, we might have a little formative conversation, say, hey, I noticed you doing that. That was great, Tor. Can you please tell me more about that? It's really allowed us to have those conversations, but also to be aligned across the elementary schools, is to know that we're all doing this work together. Because again, we all know it's, balanced literacy is best practice and with the goal of helping students at all elementary schools achieve. And then finally, it's finding systematic processes to make informed decisions about resource allocation and professional development. So that's just kind of what we are talking about in terms of what do we do next year? How do we finish this year off really strong? But how do we build it into our school continuous improvement plans as well as springboard for the 18, 19 school year? for the 18, 19 school year?
So, here's a list of some of the things that we've been focusing on for the last few years. Some of them new this year. The LCV model at the bottom is really how the administrators are getting involved, as Richie explained. It's been really exciting. I have loved this opportunity to get into classrooms and really look critically at how teachers are teaching, gathering the data on areas where we need to focus our improvement areas. It's going to help drive these items. So, we meet as a learning team, as principals, and we discuss that. How do we implement that in our buildings? And so, it comes out in the learning team. Lit Labs are being hosted already at the buildings. I know Gwen Molden's taken that work and making that happen. Workshop Live, as Kevin mentioned, is where the teachers are modeling for other teachers already in the district. Reading Units of Study being the new curriculum that has come along. We have it and we're moving to the real more robust version of it next year in some capacity as some teachers have piloted it this year and most classrooms are going to it next year. There's a lot of learning around that as we do that. It's going to fit perfectly with where we're going. Writing of Units of Study is happening right now. Next year, we'll be on year two of that totally across the district. And the reading units of study and writings, they mesh with one another very well. And again, how do we, as administrators, help? That LCV model's really going to drive our work with our teachers.
So, our plans for next steps, we really want to become systematic in our processes between all seven elementary buildings. This is all an outcropping of our professional learning community teamwork. We made a very intentional decision last year to work together as a team. And we are doing exactly what our teachers are doing every Wednesday. They're working together and they're diving deep in the critical questions about student learning. And we said, "Hey, we need to take that walk right alongside them." And so, that's what this is all about. We're going to continue gathering data and we're now on our third cycle of literacy classroom visits. We're going to continue to learn professionally. Bonnie is just one part of our learning. She's joined us several times, but we meet every two weeks regardless of whether Bonnie meets with us or not. We're going to align our goals in our school continuous improvement plan. And really, what we're trying to do here is become more efficient and more effective in our practices because we're aligning ourselves for resources. So, it's a much better use of our time. Lastly, we will continue to collaborate with our partnerships with Kevin, with Gwen, and with our amazing teachers that are showing us the way with literacy instruction. Thank you.
Just to speak to that quote on the bottom too, I really, it's been really energizing just to work with this team as they dig in altogether. And they have really approached this as a group systematically so we don't have pockets of excellence across one school or another. And it's really exciting to see some of the data they're collecting and some of the next steps we're planning as a district as we move forward. I'd like to introduce Ann Greiner, Assistant Principal at Prior Lake High School, to tell you a little bit more about our secondary plans.
So, at the secondary level, a few years ago, we introduced literacy strategies to our teachers and we provided a visual that they could use and we had PD around it. So, now that we're down the road a little bit, we wanted to revisit those literacy strategies. Where are our teachers with these? Are they being used across our building? We see them in our classroom every day, but what is their knowledge around not only the literacy strategies and practices, but also the ELA standards in a math class or in a science class or in a PEE class? So, in December, we gave a survey to all of our secondary schools, our two middle schools and our high schools, to see where our teachers were at. And what we found are kind of two gaps. We identified two gaps with our teachers, one being the knowledge of the ELA standards in other content areas. And the second gap that we found is just a general gaps around reading strategies. When I'm reading a text with my students, what do I do before the text? What can I do while they're reading the text and what can I do after they read the text? So, just knowledge around those practices, pre and post strategies. So, now that we know that, where do we go from here? So, moving forward, as you saw tonight, we've seen great success with the CLR strategies. Teachers have really taken to it at the high school and at the middle school level. And walking into classrooms, the engagement of the students and the results that they're getting with those practices and those strategies is just unreal. It's really fun to watch. So, what we'd really like to do is integrate our literacy strategies along with that, build on the success that is already happening in our classrooms and integrate that literacy piece with it. If you look at the CLR strategies, you will find those literacy strategies embedded in them already. So, what can we do with our staff to integrate and intertwine that, those strategies so they have instructional strategies to work through with their kits for all students? The other piece that we'd like to do moving forward is develop a cohort model at the high school for that deeper learning. Can we find some teachers in a cohort that really want to look into this and let them lead those strategies and create those peer learning opportunities? We learn best from each other. It's nice to see those strategies and talk about them, but going into someone else's classroom and seeing them in action and then having that discussion after words is so powerful. So, we'd really like to develop that cohort where teachers are driving this and then are leading that work so other teachers can come in and watch them teach these literacy strategies. So, going forward, as you can see, both at the middle school and the high school, just that intensive focus on our struggling, I'm sorry, intensive focus on PD around this and really integrating that literacy and CLR together. The other piece is that peer learning experience, that workshop live experience and giving teachers the opportunity to go into the classrooms of the literacy cohort teachers or any other teachers for that piece. The other thing to look at is this really connects with the learning teams that we already have in place. We have learning team lead meetings. We have learning teams. And those teams are already diving into the data of students. They're looking at assessments and looking at where, who are our bottom quartile students and how are they struggling and why are they struggling? So, when they look at that data, how do you move forward? What strategies should be put in place? What literacy strategies do they need? What CLR strategies do they need? So, really connecting it to our learning teams as well. So, everyone will get those strategies and the professional development and the peer learning experience and then diving deeper with that literacy cohort model going forward.
Good. This is all coupled with some of the work we're going to begin yet this spring really around English Language Arts Curriculum Review and Development. So, we've talked a lot about literacy strategies for teachers in other content areas in secondary. And now, we're going to begin the work really of reviewing what do we teach in our English classes in secondary as well as elementary. We have a successful balanced lit model in elementary that we're going to continue to hone and improve as our elementary principals spoke to. And in secondary, we really want to leverage that and the voices of our elementary teachers to help our secondary teachers see how we can give more voice and choice to students in what they read and how they access content and some of the experiences that they have and really bring that to all of our students, E-12. So, as you can see, we're starting that phase this spring and we're getting a team together representative of all of our secondary and elementary buildings. We're going to have an initial meeting really coming together around foundational beliefs. What do we believe great literacy and English Language Arts instruction looks like in Prior Lake Savage area schools? How do we do it? What are our practices as teachers in bringing these strategies to kids? And then, next year, we're going to get deeper into reviewing current practices, reviewing, doing a deep dive and how are students doing in our English classes, especially in secondary? Researching best practices. That might include some academic research. That might include some other successful, visiting some other successful programs that we know of. And then, beginning the development of our intended curriculum aligned to standards and outcomes. Phase three continues probably into the next couple of years past that as well, really with professional development around the intended curriculum and bringing it to life. And as we bring it to life, we begin the continual process of monitoring and adjusting until the next curriculum review process comes around again. Can I answer any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Shuttenger or any of the other presenters? Go ahead, Mary.
Kevin, just out of curiosity, given that this is obviously a long-term project as we discussed before, it's not something that's going to give an immediate result and one that needs to be worked on. How are you measuring success for this? And what is your, first of all, what is your definition of success? Do you have a goal or?
We have several. I mean, and we have several measures for that. So, when we look at something this broad and this wide, we look at, of course, standardized assessment scores. We look at MCA. We look at MAP. We look at FNP. And one of the things that we're sealing, seeing from some of our early pilots of new resources or updated resources in elementary is some pretty tremendous growth. So, we continually monitor that. We have a sizable group of teachers implementing updated reading units of study resources and we're tracking them. We're tracking them and keeping an eye on where their MAP scores are turning out, where their preliminary MCA scores are turning out, and also getting that teacher voice piece and surveying them like, and talking to them. What made a difference? What do you notice with these new resources? And what we're hearing is they're more rigorous. I understand the connections better. I feel better prepared to teach the lessons because of these resources. And I feel supported. I feel supported with the time I'm getting from the district and from building leaders to do it. So, that's really promising. You know, obviously, like you said, it's going to take some time to really see some of the fruit. And we're also seeing from our building leaders really a deep investment in that literacy culture, which, you know, takes some time to build and really hone and improve. But we're really working to standardize across all classrooms so we have an equitable experience for all kids. What does that literacy culture look like? What does a strong, you know, classroom library look like? What does really engaging secondary literacy look like? So, in short, there are a lot of measures for a lofty goal.
Continue.
One of the things that I thought was brought up either at an earlier board meeting when you first started to talk about this or maybe in a curriculum meeting, I can't remember which, was about writing and starting the kids on just getting used to writing and something about how long they were writing and doing this every so often. Is that part of this program?
It is. So, when we look at literacy, we know reading and writing are reflexive skills. They really feed off each other and they support each other. So, I think it was Patrick mentioned the new writing units of study curriculum. We are seeing just really outrageous growth with that in terms of kindergarten students, first grade students being able to write. The terminology is long and strong for 30 minutes, 45 minutes. It's honestly, every time I see it, I'm just shocked by it because, I mean, these are six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, just really able to dive into their own thoughts and their own reading and tell their stories. It's really exciting to see. And teachers are continually commenting that they didn't think it was possible and now they're seeing it. Really just giving the curriculum and the framework a chance to kind of play itself out and build those skills. And we're in the first year of real full implementation of that in elementary. So, we know that's going to build. And I have experienced teaching in the kind of writing workshop framework in secondary. And one of the things it builds on is really starting with kids' own stories, starting with narrative writing, you know, which in secondary, you know, coming from a high school English standpoint, we often kind of give short shrift too, is, you know. But that's how kids learn to write long because they know their own stories. They know their lives. They want to tell those stories. And then, building those skills so that they can later write analytical or technical or other types of writing, argumentative.
Any other questions from anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is facilities, planning, and construction. The first presenter will be Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Holberg. First item is the approval of the Edgewood and Westwood design. The drafts were presented at the April 23, 2018 Board Study Session and Board Approval of the Design is requested. So, I'll let you go through your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Wolf.
And then, we'll probably have any questions after that.
Thank you, Chair Wolf. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Stallow, I'm here tonight as Chair Wolf kind of gave an overview. This is a recap of the last board work-study session of Westwood-Edgewood. I do want to give a little bit of an overview on the stakeholder design team process. This is a group that started meeting back in January, looking at concepts of Edgewood-Westwood, having conversations around what you're going to see tonight. A little side note, when I mentioned that they started meeting back in January, if you as a board remembered all the weather inclement days of no school or two-hour late starts, I think most of the meetings we had with this group were on those days. And so, a special, certainly special thanks to the design team there for their flexibility and working through the process despite the weather inclement portions of it. Jokingly, we did have a meeting with this group over two weeks ago. And so, we were sort of, we sort of were chancing it, but no snow on that day. So, luckily, given how things are. But, in all seriousness, real commitment from this group, good conversations and feedback regarding what we're going to be presenting to you tonight. And so, I'm going to start with the link between both Edgewood and Westwood, which is our cafeteria, servary, and ultimately a multipurpose room. You can see that this is an outside look at this space. So, if you're looking at that cul-de-sac area where the buses come in, you'd be standing, looking in. You can also see that there is a, on the west side, there's a lower masting and then on the east side, there's a higher. And I'll start getting into this a little deeper. This is looking from the playground side. And so, you have those windows that are looking in for lighting purposes, making this experience for lunch very different at Westwood and Edgewood than what it is now. And I'll talk a little bit as part of this, my Captain Obvious glasses are on here, but if you've been there, you realize that this is really quite an extraordinary space for students. And that's why there is excitement about this. This is back looking on that, on that west side looking in. So, again, you have visibility all the way through, making it a much comfortable experience. Here's a little closer look at what that space is as well. Here is the floor plan. Specifically, you can see the kitchen that's being up into that upper left-hand corner, which is existing space in Edgewood. Point of sale, also a cafeteria and a larger area. Outside of the cafeteria and eating, this space will be designed for being able to collapse the eating areas and spaces so that this can be a multipurpose room. Certainly one for students at Edgewood as well as Westwood as well. You see restrooms there in this rendering. And then, also in the mechanical area, that toilet that's listed there is not pertaining to code. We do not need it. And so, as we move forward beyond tonight, that toilet area will be coming out of that mechanical area. At one point, we thought it was related to code, but it's not necessary. And so, that will give more space to mechanical buildings and grounds and being able to care for this space in the short and long term. Here's what an inside look looks like for this space. Again, just different perspective there. Seeing all the different spaces there. Now, we'll move to Westwood and looking at three separate areas here for renovation. This space over on the right are current kindergarten rooms or kindergarten room, which is being used as something else right now, and then also the current art room. Those would become and restored to kindergarten classrooms. So, those would be close to the three existing kindergarten rooms. The only renovation would be in the art room, which is currently the art room, would be turning the kiln room into a restroom area. And then, art and music would move over into the multipurpose space in the middle, renovated there. Music in between art, but then also a storage area and then art. So, really a nice space there for more storage and then access to the outside. And then, on the left-hand side is the current kitchen and servary area. That would be turned into a staff room, student support services classroom, and then more resource space. And so, I think that's one of the benefits of what's being proposed this evening is between these buildings, having more resource space and breakout space for student learning and student activities. The renovation where art and music is, also serves as a satellite kitchen as well. And so, being able to put that up into the addition will allow these two schools to use the space for art and music. And so, take a closer look from the square footage area. Again, these are the 2D drawings, but you can, we've had, again, a lot of feedback on what's being proposed in these areas with the art teacher, music teacher, building principals, and staff. And then, here's a 3D look of that new resource room, staff room, classroom. And then here's a 3D look of that new resource room, staff room, classroom. Again, trying to retain windows and as much light as possible into that area. And then here's a look at the art room and the new music room with new storage and then also a space for a kiln, for art. And then this is a look at the resource space. Right now, we've got a drop ceiling currently, that's a pretty high ceiling, so there's some ability to adjust what that looks like from the height standpoint. Another look. Here's the music room. So with that, as Chair Wolf mentioned, we are seeking Board action to approve these design plans for Edgewood and Westwood tonight.
So, do I have a motion to accept the design plans for the Edgewood-Westwood design sans the toilet in the mechanical area? By Lee. Do I have a second? By Todd. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Holmberg? Melissa.
Thanks. I have one question. Taking a look at the southeast corner, looking inside of the new space, the cafeteria, what sort of plans have we done around acoustics and sound, the next one, inside in the cafeteria space?
Oh, inside in the cafeteria, oh, so the internal, right here?
Yeah, I see a lot of hard surfaces.
So, yeah, in this rendering, you do see hard surfaces on the left and right, but you also see panels as you look, those darker gray, so those would be panels for acoustics, and as well as the ceiling will also be used for acoustics as well. Servary spaces, cafeteria spaces in elementaries do have a noise level to them, so there will be some acoustical components built in to lower the noise threshold.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Melissa? Any other questions? Mary? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the designs as presented signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 6-0.
One more thing, if I may, Chair Wolf. We did ask, pending with your approval tonight, we are going to ask at the May 23rd work session, we will be bringing bid documents for this with a commensurate timeline. We have a finance facilities long-range planning committee next week that we will be running those through. We may ask for the Board to respectfully to open so that we can move forward the bid process on May 23rd for this project.
Okay.
Okay. And with that, I will transition and introduce to the second topic.
Yep. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Bid Pack 4, Bid Pack 4, Bid Pack 5, and the pavement review presented tonight by Director of Operations Transportation, Mr. Delwo, and I think...
Yes, we also have Russ Schumacher and Todd Richter from Nexus Solutions, who will be joining Mr. Delwo in presenting these results and recommendations. With that, I will turn the podium over to them.
Good evening, Chair Wolf, School Board, Dr. Stallow. We'd like to share with you the results from our revised Bid Pack 4, Bid Pack 5, and Bid Package 6, and are seeking approval for those projects. Had a finance and facilities meeting this evening to go over the bid. You have a copy that we printed and put at your desk this evening, and so we would just like to go over that and answer any questions you might have, and that we are also seeking approval.
I'm Russ Schumacher from Nexus. Again, as Mr. Delwood said, Bid Package 4 consists of the revised Five Hocks in Glendale. Bid Package 5 was the Five Hocks building envelope, and 6 was the pavement rehabilitation at Five Hocks. The Nexus Project Management Team worked very hard to stir up interest in the project, and that was evidenced by multiple bidders in each of the bid categories except for one. We had three or more bidders for each of the bid packages. The low bidder is what is shown on the document in front of you, with the general contractor being Ebert Construction for Work Scope 1, Boiler Services for Work Scope 2, which was the plumbing and piping, HVAC, the ventilation side, which was Work Scope 3, went to Metro Sheet Metal, and Laketown Electric was the low bidder for Work Scope 4. All of that, again, was for Bid Package 4. Bid Package 5, low bidder was American Masonry Restoration. The window replacement, low bidder was Door Service Company. And Bid Package 6, which we got quotes on, was the Batuminus Roadway, was the name of the contractor for that. The amount of the bids totaled $1,172,545.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the approval of the bids as presented on the packet that's in front of you?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second? By Stacy, are there any questions or comments?
Question.
Mary?
On the Bid Pack 5 for the building envelope, my first question is, is that who we chose American Masonry is over half, if not less than half of every other bid. Is there, did you guys look at the full bid pack and figure out why they were able to bid so low versus everyone else?
Yeah, I'll let Todd address that.
Sure. When we talked to them, they were not full for the summer, and a lot of the other ones were.
Okay.
And they will sign the document, they provided a bid bond, and they will sign a performance and a payment bond as well.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I just have one comment.
Go ahead, Stacy.
This will be loaded up in the Board Book.
Correct. Decided.
Correct.
All right.
Any other questions or comments?
One more.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
I spoke to Jim about this earlier, but because we moved things around so much, and we did have a long-term facilities maintenance schedule, if we could kind of merge those two together to show where we are with what's getting done and isn't getting done, because it did, obviously, it's not aligned anymore for us to be able to track.
Right.
So, that would help. And then the other question that I have is where are we with regards to overall budget at this point?
Yes, so as far as this project goes, the original budget was $1,028,000 and change, so close to $1,029,000. It came in about 14%, a little less than 14% over that original budget between the three bid packages. But we take some of that into account with the contingencies we have, the design and construction contingencies. As some of the scopes had, as the design committees got involved, took a look at things, and we made some improvements to the original plan based on that for the educational environment. Some of those costs did go up, so more budget had to be added. But again, we took that out of the contingencies, and no other projects will be compromised because of that. That was planned for, and we will accommodate that with this budget overage.
Okay, so I expect to see kind of that delta be placed in the overall plan also.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you for that clarification. So, you said it was 14% over budget?
Yeah, a little under.
Okay.
About $145,000 over budget.
And we can account for that?
Correct. Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments?
One more.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So, when we realized that we were 14% over, was there any opportunity for the facilities group to take a look at areas that we could cut so that we could be in line?
I may take this one. Tonight, I presented to the facilities, which will come to the next work session, where we're at with our long-term facility maintenance bond. In actuality, our district has, for the several, last several, couple of years anyway, I should say, too, because we just passed that two years ago, but we've actually saved about 14% or 15% of those total, $12 million. We've saved about that same amount of money over the course of the last few years when the projects have been completed. So, we have about one, a little over $1.7 million in unspent dollars and with no projects attached to those in and out of that bond right now. So, there's a hundred and, a little over $100,000 or whatever the amount is.
A little over $145,000.
We'll easily be able, not only would we be able to handle it out of the contingency, but we've also saved enough money on our other projects to handle this as well.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5 to 1.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda this evening is a report on the school safety and security, presented tonight by Superintendent Dr. Stallow and her administrative team.
Thank you very much. This evening, we will provide a presentation that we also provided at the last study session. The recommendation of the Board at that time was that we present it here as well so that our viewing public could see the presentation, and it would also be taped for folks, people to take a look at later. And I'm happy to have an amazing team of administrators that will be tagging this presentation as we go. In order for our mission to come to life for our learners, our staff and our students need a safe learning environment. They also need to know and understand safety precautions that they will use throughout their life. Throughout their life, there will be fire drills and evacuations and weather, severe weather warnings that they will be dealing with, so we want to be sure that they have safe protocols in place while they're in school as well. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, we always think about and prepare for school safety and security, and it's part of our ongoing operational work. When tragic events occur, we pause, we reflect, we revisit our protocols to ensure that we have the safest protocols in place. There's no simple solution to school safety, no single method, product, or program to use today that is actually fail-safe. Since the school violence in Florida in February 14th, a topic of conversation across the country, and certainly in Prior Lake Savage Area School District, has been school safety and security. Tonight, we want to provide information to our community. There's been a team of administrators who have been working on this presentation and will continue to help with this. We know that school safety is a collaborative priority for all of us. The outcomes for tonight are to provide an update regarding a wide range of crisis prevention and management tools that we use, and to preview some school safety enhancements that will be implemented throughout the 2018-19 school year. As we think about school safety and crisis management in schools, we have many areas to consider. As you can see this list, it is about medical, we've got lockdown, weather, student welfare, lots of different emergency situations that we have to be prepared for and constantly consider, and we always need to be prepared. We're fortunate to have experts and resources that we can work with for crisis management support. Earlier tonight, Beth Fuller shared information about the mock, the mock crash that took place. That was a collaborative effort with the City of Prior Lake Fire and Police, the City of Savage Fire Police, the Linei Health, as well as the county, the State Patrol. So, it's constantly a collaboration, and we're very fortunate to be able to call upon expertise when we need it. Not on this list is the National Weather Service, that provides updates, and we certainly spent a lot of time with this year as well.
Good evening. Moving into, talking a little bit about our emergency management planning, we follow this model that's recommended by the U.S. Department of Education as well as the Department of Homeland Security. It starts with prevention and mitigation, so looking at creating positive school culture, which we'll be talking about in a little bit. Also, planning and preparedness and going through what can be, you know, difficult to talk about, but some worst-case scenarios, and going through some drills and concepts to think about what we would do in a crisis situation. Also, a response, we have a coordinated response, not only with, from the district level and the building level, but also with our local emergency management, and then of course, recovery, so restoring our teaching and learning environments and offering mental health support. This is what our school safety structure looks like in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, and it starts with the district crisis response team. This is a team of administrators that's really charged with going through our crisis management plan and ensuring that we are prepared, our planning is up to date, and we're following best practice. We also have a community crisis response team, and this includes all administrators as well as our local police, fire, Scott County Emergency Management, and ambulance. And we meet as a full group every year, but then we have ongoing conversations, of course, throughout the school year as well, and I'll be talking a little bit more about that on the next slide. We have a district recovery team. This is made up of social workers, counselors, and staff, and their role really is to put together plans and procedures for recovery, so an example of that would be grief support. Building crisis response team, every school in the district has a building crisis response team, and that's made up of not only administrators but guidance and also staff, and their charge is to make sure that they are ready and they are prepared, and they are constantly assessing their protocols in their building and making sure they're doing all of their drills every year. Our medical emergency response team, or MERT, every building in the district has a MERT team, and this team is responsible for making sure that they provide emergency medical assistance, so CPR, using AED so that they can take action immediately before emergency personnel arrive on scene. And then our building recovery team, these are social workers who also help with mental health support at the building level. As I mentioned, we do have a community crisis response team. It's a very large team, we're 50 to 60-strong. We meet once a year. This group just met this spring, and typically what we go through are tabletop exercises, and those are, every year we put together a scenario. So, it's a crisis scenario in which everybody on this team would have a role to play. So, it really gets everybody thinking about not only what they would do personally, but how you would work together and respond as a team. This particular year, we decided to talk about our lockdown procedures and moving towards a new model that's best practice called lockdown with options. And it's called a few different things, but the point of it is, is that rather than hiding in place, you have other options. We'll be talking about that a little bit more later in the presentation, but our local emergency personnel was very responsive to that. They've also been through this training and think it's the right way to go. So, this group has been really instrumental in not only going through those scenarios, but also getting to know one another so that when a crisis does happen, we are all familiar with one another. As I mentioned, prevention is a big piece of our crisis management planning. All of our front entrances in our buildings are secured, so during the school day, all of the doors but one are locked. So, visitors have to go through the main office, check in, state their business. If they are granted access, they're given, they have to sign in, they're given a badge, and they also have to sign out. As we mentioned earlier this year, we are going to be adjusting the check-in process at the high school. Right now, people do have to, you know, come into the school and check in, but, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm stating this incorrectly, but we're putting a check-in in the vestibule, so we're getting people out of the weather elements, but they are not allowed, there won't be allowed access to the rest of the building until they state their business and check in. For Kids Company, our before and after-school childcare, parents are given a coded door access, so they type in their code to bring their child in for the start of their day. And then we have several surveillance cameras throughout the district to help us with crisis prevention as well. We do have two ways to report unsafe situations. People can either call our anonymous tip line, or they can report something online. And these are two systems that have been used by parents and students, and they're very helpful in prevention. As I mentioned, we, all of our schools do drills. We are required to do five lockdowns, five fire drills, and one tornado drill every year. And we have two school resource officers who are very helpful to us, one stationed at Prior Lake High School, and then one that is shared between our two middle schools. And I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
All right. I'll start out here talking about the importance of relationships. We certainly have always made that a priority, and actually, you heard others tonight in various presentations speak about that, whether it be the CLR, teaching practices, or the literacy instruction going on. Relationships matter, we know that, and we have spent a lot of time continuing to be committed to that in this most recent school year here that we're in, and we collect data around that. And as you can see up there in the right-hand corner, that data that we take from this spring survey shows that our students do feel connected, and we've spent time as staffs at our various levels. at our various levels, making sure that we, as staff, understand the importance of those connections, making sure that students, as we grow larger as school systems, that we maintain that focus on those relationships. Because we all know that students that feel connected to adults in school are going to feel more safe and secure despite any of the other things going on around them when they walk in the doors each and every day, that they feel connected to an adult than they will feel as though we are there to support them. And we have a number of things that we have done programmatically, and we'll talk about that in a moment, but I'll give other colleagues a chance to step forward and speak to this.
A big piece of that is, like you mentioned, forming those relationships and kind of creating that trusting atmosphere in the building. It's that balancing act, you know, but you want kids to feel comfortable in the building. I think the best way to keep a building safe is for kids to want to be there and want, I talked to them about, it's their role as well, it's not just ours, it's all of our responsibility to keep the building safe and to let us know, and we've talked about a little bit about if you see something, say something, or if you hear something, say something. A lot of what our role is, is rumor mitigation, checking things out. I don't want people, if they're wondering if they should say something or call in, that goes for parents or kids, just do it. It's kind of like that mandated reporting. If you're wondering about it, do it, because that's what we do, we check things out. And then, you know, we try to share that information with kids right away and with families. You know, I think that's the thing I'm probably, you know, finding out, you know, in this, you know, business or whatever, as long as, you know, you get in it, it's, that information travels so fast. Just recently, we had a lockdown, boy, I think two weeks ago, with something happening in the community. I got on the PA and I tried to be very, you know, there wasn't an immediate threat, so I got on and said, "We're going into a modified shelter in place." And then I explained, "Hey, there's no immediate threat right now, but there is something going on in the community, so we're not going to let kids leave the building. This is what's going on, you can function as normal in the building, and we'll let you know if anything changes." And then, you know, I saw kids in the hallway, they go, "Oh yeah, Mr. Bezek, we know what's went on." They're on their phone already, they're telling me what's going on in the community, you know, so you can't, you know, you can't control the information. They're going to find out, so you need to get that out as soon as possible so that you can kind of help put the rumors to rest, because parents are going to be calling, kids are going to be texting each other and all of that. But again, that goes back to that, we're all responsible for creating that atmosphere and then doing some training so that we have a basis for trusting our judgment, and it's that whole idea of being prepared, not scared, that, you know, we're talking about these things because they could happen anywhere. Good chance they're not going to happen, but they may. We still practice fire drills, and nobody has died in a fire in a school since I believe it was like 1952, but part of that is because of the preparation and the training and all of that, so we're trying to do the same type of thing with this. So it's just, you know, doing that communication, that training, being proactive, and that balance of feeling, we're still a school, we're still a public building, even though we have, you know, we control access, we have people coming and going all day long, and we're, with all these programs and innovative programming that we have, and, you know, MNCAPs and kids going off to other things, we're going to have people coming and going, but what's reasonable so that we know who's in the building, where are they supposed to be? And I talk to kids about that as well. Part of the reason we hassle you a little bit about where are you, why are you here, where, because we're charged with keeping the building safe, knowing where people are at all times, and yeah, it may feel like a hassle, but when, you know, stuff like this happens in other communities, it makes us revisit, and we go, "Oh, okay, that's why, you know, there's a little bit of an inconvenience." So, and as things are going well, we kind of loosen up, but if things start getting, you know, there's other threats and all of that, we tighten things down, so it's that, again, it's that sliding scale, so.
So one of the things that we have heard a lot tonight is about relationships, and building relationships is one of our biggest preventions, building our relationships with our students, with our families, and with our community. It's our greatest defense against violence. Building trust is essential, so kids tell us what they're concerned about. They have to be able to talk to us and know that they can trust us when they do talk to us about that. Good relationships allow us to help connect students with the necessary professional services for them, whether it be mental or chemical health counseling. Building that trust, building that relationship.
So looking at some of the things that we currently do in our schools, the elementary schools and the high school are PBIS buildings, K-12 throughout our district, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, ways to catch kids when they're doing things in a positive manner. K-5 is Responsive Classroom, and that's an opportunity for us to build community within our, in our classrooms every day. Currently, right now, our classrooms every morning spend time with morning meetings and getting to know the students and giving them that opportunity to share things, whether it be positive or whether it be something that's on their mind at that time. We, you heard a lot tonight about CLR, Culturally Linguistic Responsive Classrooms. One of the things that we also do is Second Step, which is a social-emotional program. It walks kids through their feelings. How, what does school look like and what do we do in school? How do we be active listeners? How do we respond to something when somebody says something that may hurt our feelings? How do we become problem solvers? And what is our role? And then we've got web at the middle school, and I'll let the other two to kind of talk about web and what's at the high school.
Sure, and I'll also comment on the Second Step program. We do that on a weekly basis and falls under the category of character education, and we send a follow-up email to our parents the day that we deliver that, and just sharing kind of a little bit about what that lesson was about. And I routinely hear very positive feedback from our parents about that notion that we have something to talk about at dinner tonight because we can ask our child, our son or daughter, about the particular lesson that was a part of the Second Step curriculum for that day. And so that lends itself to some great conversations, once again, keeping those lines of communication open between the students that we're working with at the middle school level who are starting to push back a little bit with adults and, and want that, to gain that separation and independence, yet keeping that role of the adult in their lives, both at school and at home. And then, secondly, the web program is a program we've had in place at the middle schools for a number of years now, and it's a great example of helping build that positive climate in our schools where each student, a group of students, we identify, actually, we just identified our students for next year, so we take it this time each year in May, seventh graders who will serve in that role as eighth graders next year, as web leaders for their classmates, for the incoming sixth graders. And we bring the sixth graders in on a day prior to the start of the school year, half day, and they get to do some fun, get-to-know-you activities, both with students who are older but also with their classmates, because as you know, they come from six different elementaries to our two middle schools. And it's a great day for that bonding and culture and climate building to occur, and then that goes on throughout the year. They have a connection with an eighth-grade student who's been given some training during the summer about how to be a good role model to the younger student, and again, once again, helps to create that positive climate and continue to have, develop those relationships. I talked earlier about the relationships with staff and students, but also students and students as well.
I think a big part we've talked about too is just empowering our student body, that P.L. kindness. We've got groups of kids in the building that have kind of taken upon themselves to, you know, share good news, be kind to kids, share that message of just being a good person. And the live group is our transition group that helps mentor ninth graders as they're coming into the building so that they feel like they're part of the building right away, you know, so we don't have these, you know, like the dirty word of hazing or any of that. We take ownership of those kids right away, because I tell kids that we need those ninth graders to come in and be successful. If we're going to be the best that we can be at Prior Lake High School, we can't exclude kids, we need to get everybody involved, find out what their talents are, and make them feel part of the school. So the student body has taken that on. And then that last piece there, the emergency action planning, which actually, I was surprised to hear about this from Russ Reitz, the high school league actually has a, a program where they, they require the, every team to fill out this emergency action plan, like if something would happen at a game or at a practice, you know, how would you respond? You know, is there, you know, who would run and make a phone call to 911? Where is the AED machine and all that, so they think those things through. So it's that whole idea, again, of being prepared if something would happen. And it's just a good life skill for, not only for an activity, but it gets you thinking in that mindset that, hey, you know, why doesn't somebody do something? Oh, I'm somebody, I should do something, you know, just taking ownership and stepping up. It's that idea, instead of being passive, you know, taking an active, active role and, you know, being part of the solution. So we've got a lot of good things going on, but we can do a lot more as well, you know, because the things keep changing, so. And then, again, we're starting to implement PBIS again at the high school as well, like others, and it's just that idea of setting those expectations of what we want kids to be able to do and reward, you know, kind of rewarding, rewarding them and encouraging them doing the right thing, so.
One final note about the support that we get from county, mental health, and Park Nicollet relationships, they come and provide grief counseling for our students at the secondary level, and then we have a relationship that we actually, we're just giving some feedback about how that has gone, the supports we've had from Scott County Mental Health. As we know, certainly that's an area where we continue to need the support that we are getting and would look for more as well.
As you know, threats can come in many different forms, and that's why we have threat assessment protocols as part of our crisis management planning. In fact, we just met as a team last week to go over that. It's something we review regularly. When something does happen, we either work from the district crisis response team, or it's at the building level, or sometimes we work in concert together. It just depends on the situation. You know, it's, it's a very detailed document, although it looks, sounds like it's very prescriptive. A lot of times when something happens, things move very, very quickly, and we're able to go through our assessment quickly and oftentimes work in concert with police if we need to. So we've talked a lot about our crisis management plan. Just to recap, these are all of the teams that, that, you know, study this plan and make sure that they have emergency management readiness when it comes to planning and responding. And it's a very large document, but it's something that we, as an admin team, you know, review regularly, it doesn't just sit on a shelf. At the same time, it's not something that we expect all of our staff to have or know or memorize, so we want to make it very easy for any teacher in the classroom to know what to do in a situation. So when we, every, this, what you see on the screen here is something that we have in every single classroom in the district, and we boiled it down to, you know, four actions that no matter what's going on, a teacher or support staff would need to know about evacuation, lockdown, severe weather, or shelter in place, and what to do in those situations. So that is something that we did a few years ago. We'll be reviewing this document this summer to see what needs to be updated with that, especially if we move forward with our lockdown with options. Obviously, communications is a big piece of any crisis. We always want to get information out as quickly as we can, but as John alluded to and as you very well know, you know, people have phones and, and students are on it and they know what's going on right away. Our job is to make sure that we get really clear instructions and facts out as quickly as possible. And when a large crisis happens and things unfold not as quickly as we want, we might send out just messages every few minutes. Once we have the information, we'll send it out as quickly as we can. Our goal is, is just clear communication and trust and credibility.
Over the past several years, we've added and secured that single-point entrance at all of our high schools, or at all of our schools except the high school, and we've also added cameras across the district. The high school is the only building right now that doesn't have the access into one entry point into the, the school, and as has already been said, we are changing that. Also, as we design the new entrance of the high school and do the construction work there, it'll certainly be a secured entrance. Our schools are safe, and we need to constantly balance, to Dr. Bezek's point, that safe learning environment and having our, our schools feel like a secured fortress. We also need to listen to our stakeholders, and we have. Since the tragedy in Florida in February, we had a few emails from some parents and staff and community members and some meetings with them. The themes of those emails really were a question about the protocols, what happens if students are outside during a lockdown, what would we do about that? Also, some questions about if we identify all visitors who come into the school, questions about if we have that double buzz system or why we don't have a double buzz system with some of our entrances. Some people asked about fences around schools and the middle school students crossing the street. We also asked our, ask our stakeholders each year, this is the second year of our student, staff, and parent stakeholder survey about school safety. We have questions in there. It's important to note, as you look at this data, that Prior Lake Savage area schools has done nothing different from last year, except we've talked about how to have the high school entrance be even more secure. A reminder that the timing of the school violence in February was February 14th, and you can see on this that our survey window was February 26th through March 9th. I believe it's safe to say that the incident in Florida impacted the perception of school security at Prior Lake Savage area schools, and we're paying attention to this data and responding to it.
Finally, my turn. So access management to the buildings, we, we typically funnel our visitors to a single control point, which is the main office. There are a couple of different models to that. One is to secure the perimeter completely before you get into the building, double buzz. Or typically, what we've done since 2008 is that we get people into the office as the single point of entrance, and parents and visitors sign in, and that's how we know who's in the building. Obviously, things are evolving, and we're looking at everything very carefully. We had a meeting last week with a security expert, long history with our school district, and we are looking at best practice.
All of us, though.
So we also are looking at a visitor management system that we'll track, who is in our buildings through an ID. There are several different kinds of systems out there, and we have yet to select any system that would, that we are interested in quite yet.
So in September of 2015, an admin meeting, they met together and they researched the Raptor model and decided not at that time to move forward, as they agreed that, you know, what we had currently in place right now provided the security and the environment that we wanted here at Prior Lake Savage area schools. We're now in a different place, and we're going, we will be moved forward this summer with adding a visitor management system like Jim talked about. A team of us are assembled to learn more, and we're, we will share with you our findings. We'll share it with the admin team, and then we'll determine the best system to use in place for our schools to meet our needs here at Prior Lake Savage. Okay. So lockdown, we talked about lockdown with options. Current practice right now for our lockdown protocols is to lock the doors, turn off the lights, close the blinds, stay away from the doors and windows, and stay quiet. At Glendale, it's to close off the educational wing and for our staff and students to get in, to hide into different areas in their building. When you walk through the building, you cannot see anybody in there. And those are the current practices right now, and as we look at that, we know that our schools are safe, and we always look at how we can enhance things. So we started talking about lockdown with options, and many different governmental agencies, local emergency personnel, FEMA, Department of Ed, all talk about the traditional lockdown, and it's still effective, but in some instances, there are, there are other things that we could be doing at that time. For example, we could run. We can hide, or we can fight. Prior Lake Savage area schools are going to implement an improved and more proactive lockdown protocol that provides additional options for our staff and our students if we were ever to be in an emergency situation.
I'll just add, I think we're just looking at what is best practice out there, and best practice has moved beyond just lockdowns. Lockdowns are a good option, they'll always be a good option, but we should give people a few more choices, that option of possibly, you know, running out of the building or, you know, fighting back if needed as a last resort. So we're just going to look at all of those, and we're working in conjunction with both Prior Lake and Savage PD. They're going to some training, we're going to go to the same training, and then we're going to talk about how can we customize that, you know, we'll go to the training for grounding, but then we'll customize it to what works for us here in the district. But we want to go so we're all grounded in the same language, and then we can make it fit and tweak our plans so that, but then we got to come back and then we got to implement that, so we got to train staff, we got to train students, administrators, and all of that, and that'll take a little bit of time, because it's easy to do a lockdown, and we like lockdowns because they're orderly and people sit there and be quiet. Now, if you start giving people options of, okay, based on the information, you get to run, okay, how are we going to track that, or how are we going to test that, or, you know, those things. So it, again, it's that training to give people the, the ability to trust their judgment in a situation. And that training, what it would probably look like, and I've done this in some other positions I've been in, is, you know, you do the lockdown drills, and then maybe you talk through scenarios every time you do one of those lockdown drills, and you're just educating people on, hey, if you educating people on, hey, if you were here, what would you do? Or if you were in another part of the building, how would you, you know, just get them in that mindset of if, if something happened, what would I, what would we do? So that's probably our, our next steps.
And, and just so you know, um, you know, that, we're in the research phase of these new, um, lockdown with options and the visitor management system. There'll obviously be a big training phase as well and then we'll have a comprehensive communication plan for both of those, um, not only with our staff, but our parents as well.
Okay, with that, um, I know, uh, for the audience at home, this presentation was given to the school board during our April twenty-third, uh, study session. We had quite a robust discussion at that time. Uh, are there any other additional questions that weren't answered at that time that you may have tonight? Melissa.
Uh, one thing that we didn't talk about, uh, in terms of safety enhancements was perimeter. Um, I know that we've had parents in the community, uh, ask the board if there's additional perimeter security things, some of the elementary schools, and that was something that I guess I forgot to bring up at the last meeting when we had this conversation.
Uh, we did some research. Uh, we did have a parent call and wanted to know what it would cost to fence all of our grounds and I think they're over, approaching or slightly over one point five million dollars as we did the, uh, work to figure out what that cost was.
Are there any, let me go around the table first or, uh, Stacy, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just, I appreciate.
Excuse me. Melissa, were you finished?
No, I really appreciate the information. Excellent presentation. Thank you for bringing this to the community.
Um, I echo that as well. Um, I, you know, I think it's important that, you know, this gets out there. I think, um, that a lot of this has been in place, um, and people just didn't know that. So, um, I think it's really important that we, you know, talk about that our schools are safe, that it's, it's always been a priority. I know, um, for as long as I've been on the board, um, you know, we've always tried to build that in each time there was improvements in buildings as, uh, changing, um, the entrances. So, um, I know it's always been a priority for the board as well. Um, I missed the study session, so I'm sorry if this was already asked. Um, as far as the visitor management system, um, research mode, so we're not sure, you know, that may not be in place then at the beginning of the school year of the fall. Is that, we don't really have a timeline yet? Is that?
We don't have a timeline yet. Um, we hope to implement something as soon as, um, possible, but we really wanna do our due diligence with it and make sure that we research the system that's right for us.
Okay. I was just wondering on timeframe.
Yeah, I think the other thing that, you know, um, we, um, will take a look at, at some of the other systems that exist. Part of it's supply and demand right now because obviously there are a lot of districts that are also looking at, um, adding some enhancements if they don't already have them. So, um, we'll certainly move as quickly as we can and get a timeline to you once we get decisions made.
Any other questions? Lee, do you have any?
I was just gonna comment, same as Melissa. I'm glad that this was presented at a board meeting. Um, communication is key. Um, not that we're not doing everything already, but to reassure parents that, you know, we are doing the right things and we're looking at other ways to do things better. Um, I'm anxious to hear more about the, um, visitor management system as, as you, uh, research it.
Okay, I, uh, will concur with the fellow, um, board members and I, um, agree with Lee that we have a large communication, uh, opportunity coming up here in the near, as we communicate with our parents about our new va, visitor management system. Mary?
Um, I obviously concur that I think it's great that we're moving forward with this and, and we're doing that. Um, I also wanted to commend, uh, the fact that we saw another school district's, uh, lockdown with options, uh, during the, uh, study session and, um, would hope that we would get feedback on that because obviously they're just trying that out new also. Um, and, uh, we're fairly far down the path, so it would be nice to learn from those other schools, get feedback on what's working, what isn't working. Um, one of the things that I did think of after the study session and, uh, I didn't know if it was indirectly approached here, is the intermediate, uh, process for, um, the kids in the elementary schools, particularly those that are in the open classrooms where there really isn't a place sometimes to put them. Uh, is there going to be any kind of remediation with regards to that, uh, until we get, um, all these other processes and, and procedures in place?
I think, uh, as we've reviewed things, we've, our schools are safe. Our schools are safe right now and I think that's an important message that our community hears. Um, and certainly we're reviewing all of our protocols right now and, uh, having conversations with our teachers and our office staff to make sure that those protocols are followed with fidelity.
Okay, thank you.
Don?
Um, I had the, if it was unfortunate or fortunate, um, time to meet with Terry on April twenty-fifth, the day of the latest lockdown. So I got to see it firsthand. I would like to commend Christie and I know John was on the phone and all the other principals Terry talked with in amongst our half hour meeting that went to an hour and a half, which was fine because you get to see it firsthand. So they did a wonderful job. Uh, the great communication between the, um, Savage Police Department, Terry's office, Christie's office and, uh, saw it firsthand. So it was refreshing to see that, so thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next on the agenda this evening is a budget update, uh, presented, uh, no board action is required, presented by Executive Director of Business Services, Ms. Sink.
Not really sure where mine is under this. Well, I will start off by saying, um, talking just a little bit until we get this figured out here. Um, talking a little bit about what's happening at the legislature. Um, we are on that countdown to the end of the session here. Um, Monday, May twenty-first is the last day. However, all, as you know, all the bills must be, um, passed off the floor in the House and Senate, um, by the previous day. And so otherwise it can't move on, um, correctly. Um, this leaves about sixteen days or even less than that now. I think we're, um, um, for the legislature and the governor to grant a supplemental budget proposal, that, um, spend about three hundred million dollars, um, a comprehensive tax reform bill and a bonding bill. And the legislature has passed its supplemental budget and tax bills and will go into conference committee, um, to negotiate those differences. Um, Terry, I don't know if I'm stealing your thunder at all. Um, but, um, I don't know how many of you have seen that the governor has announced he's requesting an additional, about a hundred and forty million dollars in emergency one-time pupil, per pupil funding for school districts. Um, if you were to look for our district, it's just under one point three million dollars in additional funding, but just for one year. And so that's, um, one of those situations where, um, I'm sure a declining enrollment district would be able to hang on to their teachers for one more year. Um, or if they're making budget cuts, that would be, um, very appropriate for them. But it's really difficult to hire additional staff with funding that's only re, being received for one year because it's not an ongoing funding source. Um, we'd certainly take the money, I'm not saying that we wouldn't, but, um, it'll be interesting to see how this, um, works out between those two, um, the, actually the three bodies. Um, so it's about a two percent increase per, um, per school district. And then, um, they're still working on a pension bill. As you know, the TRA pension bill was something that we discussed quite a bit last year. They're still working on a pension bill. Um, my hope and I'm sure the hope of many is if they do pass a bill that they have a way of funding it and not taking funds away from our district to fund that, um, pension bill. And, um, the omnibus education policy, um, several amendments were adopted during the floor debate, um, removing the star rating system. And then, um, and another amendment allowed innovation zone districts to use, um, nationally recognized college entrance exams in place of the high school MCAs. And then, um, that's okay. So we'll just get, let her get set up here and we'll move into that. But I wanted, was gonna go over this as part of my, um, um, presentation this, tonight anyway, so this worked out very well.
While she sets up, maybe any questions for Julie, uh, as far as the legislative updates? Seeing none?
Be your best stop shoe, Rich.
No. There's nothing wrong with a little bit of silence, though.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Uh, let's see.
Senator Pratt was added to the tax bill conference committee. Senator Pratt was added to the tax bill conference committee.
Oh. It'll be interesting to see how it all, there's some interesting tax implications as well. I'm talking a little bit, um, back to the budget. You, this is what I presented, um, last, a couple of weeks ago actually, for our, um, budget process. And one of the questions that's come back to me is, um, what, where are our students going when they leave our district? And this is, um, you can see we have about two, a little over two hundred students or two hundred and fifty students actually in this number of students that are leaving our district. Um, but we also had about two hundred students enroll in our district during the same time, so we have a difference of about fifty. Um, but you can see the majority of our students are, are moving and we've talked many times about being a mobile society. People are moving all the time and so they've either moved inside of the state or the country or moved out of the district somewhere else in Minnesota. Um, the students have withdrawn or unenrolled, um, gone to care and treatment, um, left for other legal reasons or graduated, which we had one, um, as we talked about earlier tonight. Um, some are attending non-public schools, um, and some are dropping and it seems like they were dropping out of what we call a fifteen day drop, which is a Mars requirement that after fifteen days they, that we drop them. But we have some parents that'll take their students on extended vacations and then they come back and re-enroll. So, um, that, that's our history this year, from the beginning of the year of where our students are going if they leave our district. And as you can see, the majority of them are moving. So talking a little bit about, uh, our budget process, um, our expenditure assumptions, um, one of the things that we really wanted to look at is what did we tell our community, um, when we looked to pass our referendum of what our needs were? And so these were the assumptions for the additional expenditures that we needed for our referendum and that was a duration of ten years. We knew that we would build approximately three hundred and twenty thousand additional square foot of space. Um, we had enrollment growth and those assumptions used by the task force. We assumed a two percent increase in funding from the state of Minnesota and special education funding per statute. And as you know, some of those have already changed. Our long-term facility maintenance funding per statute as well. And maintaining our teaching staff and student ratios at all level, but also maintaining our staffing ratios per other areas besides teaching, for clerical administration, special education, instructional support and pupil support. And again, maintaining our custodial staffing per square footage and our maintenance staff for square footage as well. Uh, we knew that we would have increased utility costs due to additional square footage in our buildings. We needed to maintain our technology staffing and student to device ratios. We also knew that we would have additional costs for transportation because we have additional students and additional buildings. And at the same time, maintaining our fund balance within our current policy, which is eight to twelve percent of our expenditures. So we went and worked through a five-year revenue and expenditure assumption, um, talking a little bit about revenue and these are the assumptions for all years as we look through this five-year projection, that we would receive a two percent increase in base revenue each year from the state of Minnesota. We received that two hundred and fifty dollar per pupil increase, um, that the voters voted on in November. Um, we would have enrollment increases. We're anticipating a four point nine percent increase in special education. Um, we have a three hundred and fifty dollar, thousand dollar one-time decrease in FY funding, um, due to the, um, Lakeville moving out of the MNCAPs program. And then we would anticipate that all of the forms of funding from the federal and the state for special programs, um, and grants would remain the same. And again, the governor had proposed at one point, time, a two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars special ed cross subsidy. Um, that's not included in this budget. And nor is his one-time two percent is not included in here either. Um, this is the enrollment, um, updated enrollment projections that were presented. Um, you can see we're going anywhere from two hundred and forty-five to three hundred and forty students over the next five years per year. Those are the projections. Um, I did a two-year revenue comparison showing the current year FY eighteen, um, revenue by source to the FY nineteen, next year's anticipated revenue by source. And when I say by source, where's the money coming from? Our general education aid is about seventy percent and you can see that remains pretty steady. It goes down a little bit, um, simply because of how the ratio works with, um, referendum revenue. Our property taxes went from fifteen point five percent to seventeen point four percent, so it's just under two percent increase there and that is mainly due to, um, that two hundred and fifty dollar per pupil unit increase. Otherwise, special education funding is pretty similar. Um, other state and federal funding is very similar. We have gone down or showing a reduction in federal revenue because, um, we did receive some one-time, again, federal funding last year for, um, title programs. And then other local non-tax is about two percent. Um, and when we looked at expenditure assumptions, I'll talk through, um, this current year, next year, and then, uh, the other years will be very similar. But, um, we really know what we're need for next year. Um, one point oh FTE and an assistant director of operations and transportation, eight and a half teaching staff to maintain our class sizes, four FTE of special ed staffing, um, one FTE in secretarial and one FTE of a campus supervisor at the high school. We need additional busing, um, two additional buses and we anticipate a two percent increase in transportation costs. Um, we, um, utilize what we know in our current wages and benefits for next year if we have settled contracts. Otherwise, we use a four-year historical average increase for those other agreements that are not, um, negotiated or have completed negotiations for next year yet. We're anticipating a five percent increase in utility costs, includes gas, electric, water, sewer, garbage, fuel, all of those items. A three percent property and liability insurance increase, um, and increase lease for MNCAPs, um, because we're taking over that entire amount of that building. Um, a two percent increase in supplies and materials. Um, we're re, utilizing or, um, anticipating that we'll be utilizing about fifty thousand dollars for innovation pathway, um, five hundred thousand dollars in one-time technology upgrades for wifi and switches and five hundred thousand dollars in long-term facility maintenance expenditures for Glendale and Five Hocks. So as we move through the next couple of years, you'll see that these remain static. The numbers may change a little bit, but we are, again, adding teaching staff to maintain those class sizes based on that enrollment projection you saw in an earlier slide. Four FTE of licensed student support, administration, custodial and maintenance for new building spaces. Um, three FTE of other staffing, site supervisors, playgrounds, paras, um, again, our increased utility costs. Um, we also know that we'll have increased utility costs for building additions at Westwood, Twin Oaks Middle School, Hidden Oaks Middle School, Prior Lake High School, Jeffers Ponds, Redtail Ridge, Bridges ALC. We'll need two additional buses, two percent increase in transportation costs, again, an increase in property and liability insurance, supplies and materials. And then I anticipating about one point five million in long-term facility maintenance expenditures at Greenwood for the HVAC systems in that building. And I, when we move to FY twenty-one, which means that new elementary school is open, we'll need twelve and a half FTE of teaching staff for, again, for licensed support, eight custodial staff for all the new spaces opening, um, two secretarial, two other positions and a technology position. Um, two additional buses, again, increase, increase in transportation costs and I added a little bit higher, five percent in FY twenty-one because we'll have an additional school opening and we'll have boundary changes. And I'm not sure what that effect is going to be yet, but I'm anticipating it'll be somewhat higher. Um, current wages and benefits, again, that four-year historical average increase, the utility costs for the high school and new elementary and plus an additional five percent. And then again, our property liability plus ten thousand increase for the new building. Um, and it seems like it would be low, but because we have a blank And it seems like it would be low, but because we have a blanket policy, it... It covers the, you know, all of our schools. Um, 2% increase in supplies and materials and then a 1.2 in, um, long-term facility maintenance, again, at Greenwood. Now, it gets a little lower these... Because we're done building in FY '22 because you can see we again, it's teaching staff, support staff, um, transportation, wages and benefits and those utility costs and supplies and materials for both these next two years. So we're looking out five years. We're looking at what happens, um, with our budget um, if all these assumptions prove to be correct. Um, in 2018, 2019, our expenditures, um, it should say, yeah, 2018, 2019, which is next year. You can see where the majority are. Salaries and benefits is the majority because we are a service organization. Purchased services is 11 and a half percent. Supplies and materials, three and a half. Capital expenditures are 4.4% and a little bit of other expenditures. And one of the things I mentioned at the work session is with the purchased services. I went back and looked, and I don't want people to think they're consulting services. It's purchased services are for our... We actually moved our, um, substitute teachers come out of purchased services. All of our utility costs come out of purchased services. So I want people to understand what is purchased services, that we are purchasing services or utilities or something else from someone. So it's very particular about where the UFRS allows us to code those expenditures. And so that's where that shows up. Um, this is what our long five-year plan looks like. You can see our current year budget is in the gray. The first column showing local, state and federal revenue. And then they're showing our expenditures. Um, and then the surplus or the deficit by year. And then the beginning fund balance. And then it kind of shows how our fund balance is spent on assigned, non-spendable, assigned, restricted and reserved. Um, as you know, our restricted and reserve mainly accounts for long-term facility maintenance and operating capital. And so as we look forward, at the very bottom, you can see we're anticipating at the end of this year 12.4% fund balance. So it's a little higher than our anticip... Than our fund balance policy. And it slowly spends down 12.14, 11, 10. And by the end of the fifth year, it's 9.91. And you can see the... What it is as the percent of the expenditure. The total dollar amount doesn't change a whole lot. We're still in that 12 to 13 million dollars in the fund balance. However, as our expenditures, so you can see our total revenue and expenditures are right up there, over 116, 116 million dollars in year five. Um, that number as a percentage goes down, even though the dollar amount stays the same. Um, so you can see this is, um, the red line shows a 10% fund balance policy. And you can see how our fund balance policy is, um, over time, over the last five years, and then what five years going forward looks like. Any questions?
Any questions? I know we had this presentation during the April 23rd study session, so. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to point out something that was very helpful for me when we went over this, and that's that you... This is just the general fund. So it's just one of several funds.
Right. We're only discussing the general fund. I'll be bringing all of our other funds to the board study session in May. We'll be discussing those.
And Julie, I have one comment. Can you explain again for the... Those watching maybe at home or online, what a fund balance is? It's not a pot of money sitting there, correct?
No, our fund balance helps us to manage our dollars. Um, many people don't understand that our, um... When we receive revenue from the state of Minnesota, it's metered to us. We get very little money in the summer months. And, um, we don't get... We get very little money in the months of November and in April because we're getting our tax revenue from the county at that point. Um, so we need that to... Just to make our monthly bills. And though I know it seems like a lot, you can see at the bottom of that screen, where how many months of expenditures we have. And it's... It's a month and a half is what we're... We're working on. And so if we're not getting revenue for three months, we need this money to continue to pay our monthly bills.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item number F, approval of the issuance of 2018, 2019 purchase orders.
Every year, um, we come to the board asking to be able to, um, write purchase orders for next year expenditures. All of these purchase orders are approved by our department heads or principals. And they will not be shipped to us or paid until after July 1. And we make sure that our purchase orders are sent out with that information on them. But we ask because our secretaries and our principals are getting, um, starting to work through what they need for next year and want to order those and they want to get ahead of the game a little bit to get the best pricing again. And we ask that the board approve us to go ahead and do, um, place those orders before the budget is approved.
So do I have a motion for the approval of the issuance of 2018, '19 purchase orders?
Oh, main.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee, are there any questions or comments for Ms. Sink?
Their limited purchase order amount?
They're just limited by their budget. But very rarely do they spend all of that.
So we're talking very small amounts.
Right.
Obviously. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 6-0. Next is the renewal of the copier lease.
So in your packet, you see that we are... In your board packet, you'll see that we are renewing our copier lease. We've gone with advanced imaging solutions, um, the last five years. Been very happy. We actually sent out a survey to all of our users asking how they liked our copiers and if they needed some other work or different, um, they had different needs. And so actually, the survey came back very positive. Almost 100% of them recommended that we would stay with the same service provider. And so we worked through our, um... We worked through that process through the, um, local cooperative purchasing in order to purchase these copiers or lease them. It's a lease for five years again. And it's leasing our copiers throughout the district and our print shop. And you can see that we're actually saving a little over, almost 1,0700 dollars per month by renewing this lease and getting updated copiers. Copy costs are going down. And so we actually are going to save some money with this.
So do I have a motion for the renewal of the copier lease?
Oh, main.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Todd, are there any questions or comments for Ms. Sink? Go ahead, Mary.
So there's just a total number of copiers on here. As we grow and... And does this automatically assume the same rate if we need more copiers and new buildings?
Not necessarily. As we get through that, we'll have to relook at what those needs are in those buildings, how many copiers we need. And if we can, um, we may try to get some used copiers in the meantime instead of trying to put in another lease and have something off-base there. So we may try to do something to get us by for a couple of years and then renew with more leases or more... More copiers the next leasing cycle.
What... The term of this, I can... I'm sorry, it's really small. I couldn't read it before, so I don't have my glasses on. It's...
Five years.
Five years. Five years, okay. So if we, you know, as we add space onto the high school and as we add additional space, uh, onto the middle schools, et cetera, and add a new elementary school, we would need another lease probably for those additional ones? Is that what you're saying or?
I would try not to.
Okay.
I would try to find some used copiers.
To go on our own. I just want to clarify that.
Right. Just for a few years and then try to incorporate that in the next lease.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 6-0. Next on the agenda is the School and Libraries E-Rate Program. Mr. Malazzo, Director of Technology.
Good members, a good evening, school board members and Dr. Stallow. My name is Marcus Malazzo. I'm the Director of Technology for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. How's everyone doing tonight?
Great.
Great. All right. This will be brief. So at the April 23rd School Board Session, I presented the Schools and Libraries E-Rate Form 471 bid presentation. I want to thank everyone for that opportunity to share that information at that time. We had a robust Q and A and I enjoyed it, so thank you for that. At this time, and in your board packet, there is a memo seeking school board approval for the Schools and Libraries E-Rate Form 470... Form 471 from Marco Technologies. Scope of the project includes high-performance 802.11 AC Wave 2, access points, physical controllers and switches to run the power over Ethernet Plus. At this time, I am seeking school board approval.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the Schools and Libraries E-Rate Form 471 from Marco Technologies LLC?
Oh, moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee, are there any questions or comments for Mr. Malazzo? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 6-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the Medical and Dental Insurance Recommendation, presented tonight by Ms. Sink.
Good evening. Um, as you can see on your, um, letter from Mr. Mons and myself, we've looked through and had a lengthy conversation and a review of our claims data for our health insurance and our dental insurance. And the insurance committee is recommending a 4% increase in our health insurance claims and a 0% increase in our dental premiums. I should say premiums and not claims, sorry. And our insurance premiums. Analysis of the most current data tells us that our 4% will allow the district to continue to operate our self-insured health insurance plan in a fiscal responsible manner. Um, it maintains our fund balance and continues to work towards reaching the insurance committee's goal of a fund balance of about 50%.
All right. Do I have a motion for the approval of the medical and dental insurance premium... Premiums? By Melissa, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is policy, second reading of the policies. Uh, the first readings was done at the April 23rd Board Study Session. So I will let Mr. Holmberg take us through these.
Thanks again. Uh, we have several policies for you. Policy 420 and 523 have been... Uh, we've been talking about those two policies for the last several board meetings. And now, uh, we're at a place where Policy 420 pertains directly to employees and Policy 523 is... Pertains directly to students. Uh, both are very similar in nature. The Policy 506 on student discipline, um... As I mentioned at the work session, just worked with a group of principals and also a teacher who is doing some administrative hours uh, as part of the committee. Uh, went through student discipline, just talked through all the different things. Obviously, this is a policy that gets test-driven quite frequently. And so there are minor revisions. But overall, this policy is in good standing. Um, the next three policies, 24, 525 and 525.1, pertain to technology, electronic usage, website and Intranet. Uh, these are also three policies that... That also get used quite a bit and at this time recommending no change. And then Policy 526 on hazing prohibition. Worked with the same group of principals as I did on student discipline. Again, looking at realer process and procedures. Um, at this... At this time, we're recommending, while the information was very similar to MSBA, it was ordered a bit differently. And so we are... You see quite a bit of, uh, proposed changes and we're... What we're recommending at this time is bringing this policy into alignment with MSBA. But, uh, overall, uh, the changes were very minor in the content of Policy 526. With that, I will turn it back over to you, Chair Wolf.
Thank you. Uh, I will, uh, take a motion for either of these individually or for these as a whole.
Can I just make one?
Go ahead.
I... I think there might be a typo. I just, on my board book, I... For Policy 523, what's listed as the attachment, it says Policy 420, but it's the title of 523. They are separate, correct? We were approving 420 and 523?
Correct.
It's just... It's a typo, I think. So I just wanted to clarify that that's... Because when you open it up, it reads the correct, but the title's incorrect on the board book.
If I offer clarification, what I have in my printed-out version is Policy 420 pertains to employees and all student references have been taken out. And Policy 523 pertains to students and all employee information has been taken out.
Okay.
So the 400 policies pertain to employees.
Yeah.
500 pertain to students.
Well, the title just needs to be changed in board book as far as 523 in the attachment. Okay. I guess I'd make a motion to approve the group.
Okay. I have... By Melissa, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Holmberg? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Those pass 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Administrative Reports. Superintendent Report, Dr. Stallow.
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Our collective work is focused on that mission. And tonight, I'd like to highlight a few things in which we've been engaged toward that end. First of all, recently, we conducted our second annual Parents, Staff and Student Surveys where we collected feedback um, in an effort to measure progress on our mission. I encourage you to visit our website where you will find the results of all the surveys. Uh, as you review the data, you will see that the overall results were, again, very positive. Our result... Response rates were a bit down, so we'll work on increased participation for next year. Some of the highlights from the parents include a high satisfaction levels surrounding the quality of instruction and the district achieving its mission for their child. From students, some of the highlights include strong majority stating that adults believe they can learn and be successful as well as feeling cared for or connected to at least one adult in their school. And staff survey results, again, showed a very solid majority stating that they are proud to be associated with Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and its brand. There were also high majorities of staff who believe that they work in an environment that supports innovative ideas and practices. So I hope, board members, you feel, um, proud about the guiding coalition you are as we work on those innovative ideas and practices. As stated earlier tonight, we also learned, um, given some of the recent national tragedies that have placed school safety at the forefront of people's minds, um, including safety protocols in our own schools, which is why we'll be researching, as you heard tonight, the visitor management system and exploring lockdown best practices. So please go ahead and check out all of those on our website. Um, also, our district has again been named a School Finance Award winner by the Minnesota Department of Education. Uh, the Financial Reporting Honor was given to us for meeting the MDE's criteria for exhibiting financial health and sound fiscal management and accountability. Other criteria set by MDA for this award include accuracy for financial reporting, timely submission of financial data and compliance with Minnesota statutes, and presence of indicators of fiscal health, including having a positive fund balance. Um, staff at MDE review local publications, audit reports and thousands of pieces of fiscal data to determine award winners. So I'd like to congratulate Julie Sink and her entire staff in the business office for, um, this award. Uh, just a reminder about the Partner in Education Award. Uh, will be taking place on Wednesday, May 30. The program starts at 5... Or 4:30, excuse me, in the Prior Lake High School Commons. It'll be an opportunity for us to thank our community for being supportive of our schools and our mission. We'll be serving pie, reflecting on the past school year and letting our community know where Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is going with our construction projects as well as with much of the programming and services that we offer kids. Um, so hopefully, board members and public who are viewing this will be able to attend. Um, we do celebrate staff on different weeks that are designated, um, for the different groups throughout the year. Um, this week, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week as well as Nurses Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week as well as Nurses Appreciation Week. I also want to remind everyone that we also honor all staff, certified and educational support staff during our end-of-the-year celebration. It's a time set aside that we officially close the year and celebrate staff for all they do for our students throughout the year. So we'll be serving breakfast at that and have an award ceremony to honor staff who exhibit exceptional leadership, teaching, and service in our districts. That'll be held June 8 at Prior Lake High School. Breakfast will be at 7:15, and we'll start the presentation promptly at 8. Thank you. Just one more thing. I know it's been a long meeting, but I couldn't, as I sat here and listened to the amazing work from teachers, teacher leadership, and them being empowered to lead pedagogy and school culture, to our instructional leaders, our principals who are engaged in high levels of learning for themselves so they can support our staff, to school safety and the priority that that is for all of us, to a budget and finances that are sound, to moving forward with some amazing construction work. I, I, again, am so proud to serve this school district, proud to work with a board who supports our students and our staff to do their jobs, and with an amazing administrative staff, as well as certified and non-certified staff. So long meeting, but certainly a lot to celebrate as we tell our stories at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Thank you.
Are there any administrative reports this evening? Student report.
So I'll try to keep this short because I know it's been long, but two weekends ago, we had prom, and it was overall a very good weekend. It was super fun. The theme was Into the Woods, and this year's king and queen are Sam Shering and Shadira Osuji. Last weekend, our choir had their annual celebrate concert, and that was themed British Invasion. And if you didn't make it, I feel really bad for you because it was really good. Today marks the start of AP testing, and we could already feel all the stress in the hallways. And I think I can speak for all AP students in saying that we're really excited for these two weeks to be over. And then despite the delay in spring sports due to our very long winter, all of our teams are doing very well. Just to highlight a few, both boys and girls lacrosse teams are undefeated. Our softball team is undefeated as well. Baseball is off to a very great start with a lot of double headers. And our track has their true team state coming up that I think we're holding at Dan Patch Stadium, and so we hope to continue our great sport seasons. Yeah.
All right. Any board reports?
Yes. Two weeks ago, we had the Early Learning Advisory Council. The group is working on some communication pathway improvements for parents as they help their youngster learn from school to home and making that transition with ECFE and also special ed. And this morning, I had the opportunity of celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week at Jeffers Pond. ECFE was the group that sponsored that little breakfast donut thing. So it was nice. It was great to connect with them again.
Stacy? Lee? Since last meeting, I had the opportunity to visit Tom's Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks and spend some time with Principal Edwards and Principal Kunitzoff, was able to observe the, the bus drop-off in the morning, the dance that goes on there, and the school crossing in between classrooms, and talk to each of those principals about security and the space plans for the future. And I also attended the Metro XU, the Educational Cooperative Services Unit meeting, where they talked about the programs and services they provide. We saw that tonight with the copier lease. They offer cooperative purchasing and leasing agreements. They also offer health and safety inspections that we use here through OSHA, for our OSHA walkthroughs, and they also offer professional development. So those are the two things I... Mary?
End-of-year MinCaps presentations are coming up in the next couple of weeks. I have been honored to be also a instructor for a couple of those classes, so that was quite an honor. That's not only done, but also another one that's coming up. Did follow the robotics team fairly closely, and they did finish up their year in Detroit. Didn't turn out as they planned, but they did a fantastic job, and their sportsmanship with the other alliances and the other teams was really, really outstanding. So they're already gearing up for next year, so hopefully, a lot of people will come out and support them. And while I got stuck in a whole bunch of tornadoes, thanks to certain airlines that grounded themselves, I did not make it to the meet and confer in the last Southwest Metro. However, they did make significant strides, from what I understand, in their safety protocols that they've been discussing within their schools. So look forward to getting an update in how their training and their testing are going over the summer.
Dr. Stallow and I have attended the AMSD meeting this last Friday. The legislative auditor talked about early childhood funding and evaluation programs that go on with that, and the problems that there are 41 different programs that we participate in, and each one has different items that they look at, they, they want for evaluations, and it's quite a mess. So they've said they need to take a look at it and try and streamline that for our purposes for budget and, and work. In addition, I went to the choir concert. The British Invasion was phenomenal. It was probably the best choir concert I've been to at this district. So it was a very good night, and thank you to the crowd, Terry was there also that night. So we started and ended the day there. But thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 6-0. We are hereby adjourned.